I wonder if he has to buy those cards down there. Usually they can be all kinds of.
Oh, the last one was a get out card.
Well, I don't know if that's if it's whatever it gets.
This is like the third order this. Yes, he's the one that killed his family in jail. All right, we'll call him in order and start the pledge of allegiance. Good morning, anybody have any comments?
I'm just here for the county.
Okay.
Say hi.
Good stuff. Last and final question back.
Um, I feel as but I do need an executive session for non elected personnel.
So we're gonna need to um. I want to get your files, sir. We got eight thirty-five with Josh on our. Yeah, let's do it.
I have a comment, I'll let your picture. Alright, um, this is a follow up from last week about the technology purchase for printers. Um, Sunny um says there's no local vendors that can provide the PCs and things. He did go to Radio Shack, which is the only local vendor. Um, and they couldn't, they don't sell PCs, I guess, anymore. And the specs that we need, they can't provide. Um, so he said, now you'll get us the best government pricing. So you said you're welcome to call me if you want to, but.
No, but I didn't have an amount in there, because I don't understand what I'm looking at there.
Okay, so if I have an estimate, I would like not to exceed twelve thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I'm not sure, I was reading six thousand five. I'm a fire that can hear.
The tech one.
I think if you go to that, you might want to do.
Which is this right now?
Okay, so I'd make a motion with purchase order thirty-seven forty-nine. For purchase of new PCs and monitors, Microsoft Office and display adapters, not exceed twelve thousand dollars for the. Those are obviously paid for from the treasure tech fund.
Second.
All those in there say hi.
Hi.
Hi, all of those same time. I should care, so I mean, it's not.
And then I have a second one. Check printer, um, the network card has gone bad. Um, and so, um, it's cheaper to, anyone who needs to replace network card. Um, so I work on it on the Thursday.
I would make a motion with purchase order thirty-seven forty-eight to CDW. Also pay while the treasures found in the treasure tech fund and a amount four twenty-two, twenty-eight for a new check card.
Second.
All those in there say hi. Hi, all of those same time. I made some errors. You ask me to?
I am, yes. Welcome.
Again.
So Ryan, we. Is Ryan coming?
Yeah, Ryan's coming.
Okay. Josh just called and wanted a executive session, so we're gonna start that in just a second. How long does it need to take? Fifteen minutes probably?
Yeah, fifteen minutes probably, he's got that one. Murdered. So it's at, but it's early at nine.
Okay, he better. So I'd make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to the attorney court privilege, except for the Minnesota exact. For meetings after matters being confidential under attorney court privilege, we'll appear fifteen minutes. I'll say coming back in here at eight fifty with Caleb Kirk present, and also we're gonna call in Josh Martin.
Second.
All those in there say hi.
Hi.
Hi, all of those same time. You get the phone and call him.
No, I'm not. So. He can't tell you the number. She's been telling me about the. Very much. Well, I'm trying to. And I don't know. And where one of the works are. The unity. Well. We want to. Uh, in the direction. Then I'll come to you there. On the line, I was searching the bottom house. So she's there. In my. I'm not going to. So I'm going to. The lady's number one. The lady's number one. I didn't know. Right. I'm going to. Maybe. I'm going to.
I didn't hear your radio, so I don't know whether that, I just tell us that. Yes, and when he brings you bills, you can just turn in them for orders of bills.
Okay.
And if we haven't been to the bill, then we'll come and search in for the purchase board. You know. It was on my first. The channel. Out on, I was in the light of the earth. Get out the check right now. You know, I want to check. But it's not important today, but I'm, because I've talked enough. That's the station we ride, and then I can be a better one. I did not know any information. They were just. On my channel. From I just. So. So. We have a time frame that I wouldn't give. Yeah. I didn't know they were. That. From our. Somebody called out. There. Oh, she wasn't on the ground. And I would. How is your. So. Can you talk? Sorry. Yeah. Well, why? Yeah.
Regular.
But no, sir.
Is yours going to be quick? Five minutes? Because we're going to get on the boardroom. So I'd make a motion, we're going to executive session and the following section to the Kansas Open Act, that's sent to the non-elected personnel matter to discuss. Personnel matters related to the non-elected personnel to protect the rights and privacy of the individuals involved with the county treasurer president, also the county attorney, county council president. Prepare for five minutes, I'll say come back in here at nine. Or eight. Fifty-six. Second, all those in there.
It's going.
Just good, they're just finishing up the hour session.
If you're. Joshua's going to be on the phone. But we're going to go into recess, we have a period of ten minutes, twelve minutes, we'll come back at nine, ten. We're going to go up to the boardroom to have the sort of, we'll give a hundred and ten minutes.
I will let me that just, I can leave that right now while you're doing this.
One.
How's your daughter? All right now?
Oh, yeah. You'll see. What was that thing? And then you. You can't, you can't pick up a series. You don't have a email or anything.
Well, I was at home for ten years. And sometimes it would come to a time where it was kind of tense, difficult, and then the nerves of fear.
I guess. So we're back in the meeting.
Is she here doing things on her?
I have not. But we have a couple of things I wouldn't mind. The executive session, we've got a couple of minutes, so I'll do that anyway. So I'd make a motion to go into executive session under the following exception. To the Kansas Open Act, present to the non-elected personnel matter section to discuss personnel matters related to non-elected personnel. To protect our rights and privacy of the individuals involved with both county councilors' presence. For a period of fifteen minutes, I'll say coming back at nine twenty-six. Second, all those in there say aye, aye, I'll post on this time. But very much. There's no way you can buy us out. Okay.
Hello, how are you? Fine.
Yeah, I wish you New Years. Very important years, he can hear for one house, call him Friday, we had. Daddy called him at night. And he wasn't doing well, so he went to the hospital. Over two hundred.
Oh my goodness.
Five over one oh six.
Oh my goodness.
So I thought it was happening.
So did it?
And never, never went into the room, I didn't even want to, I had to check everything, yeah, a lot of it. But they can tell where. They said, you had a heart attack. And they said, we don't know when.
Oh my goodness.
He got scared of this.
So is he still in the hospital or?
No, we got to bring him home the next day, so. New Year's Eve, we came home. That baby boy.
Are they going to do anything to get him out of the heart?
He's got a heart attack. Hopefully he does that, he's been very good.
We might help them. Get him a kick in that.
Yeah. But his blood pressure, his numbers are better, you know, so.
Good.
But man, I'm scared.
Oh, I bet you.
He called me at like midnight. Uh, but.
Yeah, that's never good, yeah.
I was like, Danny, I've been all night. Me getting out. And so I ran back all night.
Here to take the session for a little bit, we've got a minute to catch your breath. Oh, maybe share.
Wish it's not freezing on that end of the thing. Oh, I can't believe all the people that are out here. Okay, so there's kind of, I don't think we can be all around, it could be a full house.
Thank you. We're fine. Eight minutes left, so. You're good. You're good. And. When he got to me, he was saying, you're in heaven. He actually wants to be with you, so I should give him. Look down below, you're the one who's watching the light.
Now, we, we usually have the, we have the higher. Usually try to split it up between the. Like if we have something, I may do one job, have somebody else do. And I just kind of bounce through them like that, that way it just kind of keeps it. And even feel the best.
Why, for sure. And I don't know, this, this direction.
We've used steel. Before, I think they're out of those ages.
Oh, and they? They don't let you go there.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we were using steel before.
No, I'd say I thought they did, but.
Yeah, now, they weren't really comfortable with the. Sanitation portion of stay away. Because that's set up on totally a different system than they're used to. So we actually had to have a natural, like, they came down with that, and they said, this is not, you didn't tell this, that. People aren't real sure on, you know, whether someone's getting involved on that, so I had to come back.
They love us. It's a funny, kind of, they want to talk, people on the wall, it was like the. The silence, the radio is so.
Oh.
We took that whole, we had, we got in there, and I shared that. So we needed to. To remember, or to be able to. So I'm like, well. I started trying to meet people in there. Around like. I don't know, I ended up with the beginning of November, and then almost all the eighties, and it was like, oh, we're giving. So I was like, okay, you know what? It's okay, we, we need to make, like. The one person I lost, like, they had no reservation, so they had to pay so much. Our team was asked, unfortunately, we didn't still use some factor. They thought their roles would be on the same. Media stuff, so. But now hopefully, we, being in the beginning of year, hopefully, we have. Probably.
Yeah, maybe try them, they got. Yes, but.
I rock Noah, because. I'm ready to. So.
Natural void is out, it's bigger. Um, I've been used to move down, probably. Usually happen to the union. What, Christian, some sort of union, they're like, whatever, I can take you.
I used to run there, they. Very.
It was. A terrible place. You know, it's great running, but man, I think there's more to this terror.
Well, he was a truck driver there for. Years, like he, um. When he got out of the war there, he got his meal. And he went working for Schneider, and were. Really appreciated veteran, and they were becoming, being a caring part, you know, right? The most amazing thing that your guys were always wanting to do in this interview. Uh, so then he switched it pretty late, and he worked in one part, and then he was still on all that. And then. The, you know, he was putting in, going out there.
They treat that pretty good.
Yeah, I've done that for years, but. I don't know why he believed that. They want to work, he's. It happened, it was like, made it really hard to serve him, and they had no. It was a Friday. Or, something, definitely. But, um. It'll make, so it was, I mean, I'm definitely working, and they want to make presentation, you know. Is what we do, all day, we like.
One minute?
Yeah, I was, I was Saturday Sunday for years on Saturday, so I was there. Getting the, getting the doctors out there, so I can. Take off. Once more, if I want to hit that doctor's note, that would have worked from. I figured that end of April. To August. I would have had six days off.
My first child in childcare was mental, um. Childcare facility, planning, of all the cares, for people. And I will be depending on the town, for instance, when we have one major, three, four hours. So it's not major, we can split it. And we could do, you know, twelve, or, or maybe we can do fifteen and, whatever, eight or whatever. And then, um, and we could be. Time, I remember saying that, I had a baby.
I'll be here. I said.
Put that door over here, just. Maybe you. Okay, we're back in open session, no binding action taken. Said Caitlin Meyer, I was over two, and I thought maybe change. There's no rhyme. Personnel? So I make a motion, we're going to the executive session, under the following exception to the Kansas Open, exact percent. To the non-elected personnel matter exception to discuss personnel matters related to non-elected personnel. To protect the rights and privacy of individuals involved with Caitlin Meyer Health Director. Caitlin Crook, and I gotta leave this to that name, Caitlin, you know the name for an attorney, and I'm a career officer. County Council is also present for very ten minutes, so I'll say come back here at nine forty second. All those in better guy, aye, aye, all those in.
I'm going to take you back. And so I just got back last night, and I was going through. I brought another copy of that petition today, I'm just gonna have it signed off, so.
Oh yeah, I never saw Jay with that last week with that internet domain thing.
Yeah.
I've got it upstairs, I can grab it.
Yeah, they were going, um. The trial started at nine, thirty-nine, I don't know, but. It is. Officer's got a little wild, and. They're, um, we use more. Um, about the curve, too. Yeah. You can have that off.
Okay, here's the one that just gave Jay.
Okay, thank you.
How are you? We didn't know. I'm like, you know, hey, everybody. Yeah, um, we, um. We get done. I'm going to show you. I'll go my way, I want to do.
Okay.
Okay, now, very proud, indeed.
Yeah, there's something on there. You don't hold on, I don't.
Oh, now I want to be.
Yeah.
All right, so. If they want to forgive this, because I'm in the match, why was it? But it's, it's not a good thing, I think, careful to do it today, we didn't have. That, I am sure. That the eighty-fourty-five have been there, and that has given us part of doing that, really, really bad. And then, um. And then, like, it's been a nice, big first off.
Oh.
And then I can call them, you know, you. You know, they've been, they've been, and they're. Um, they're good to talk to you today, with, if they can make it on that day, if we want, and. Fairly, fairly. Okay, all right.
Thank you. Okay, Caitlin, what else we got?
We need a, uh, just a H R coach for, um, federal department, so. A lot of forums for the reflector proposal.
So we're gonna put this out. So how do we? We need something for the, uh, specs and what we need. So if you've got this one, you have, we'll get a sheet ready, and we'll send it out next Monday.
Okay.
And then we'll put like a three weeks period on it, so we'll go back and squirts to them.
And then, uh, our open ops. We don't, right, so, uh, if someone else in the county muted, and we'd be open to. Getting someone in the county to use it, or, uh, whatever, whatever that crowd is.
She's not wanting to talk.
I know.
They're going to test the generator that may put their power.
Okay.
The video is going to say one.
You got it all, is that? We're gonna test the, uh. Generators that we may require enough. So if you notice a video, if you hear, I'll come back, we'll start back up. Yes, bring that, we'll get it down here, and have Jeff and Barbara pick it up, and then we'll. We'll. Say something about that. That.
Yeah. Is there? There are. People. Stop.
On that. We'll stop. Talk to them. But the. Start. Well, about the. That's. Mostly. If you must. Post that. Not when you. Of course. That.
Um, yeah, I told. I always prefer.
Um. So I guess we all need to post. Um. A position for registered nurse. Which we. Was.
So I would make a motion that we. Make the posting for a. Uh, registered nurse for the health department. And we'll. Stephanie and HR put that out and get it on. Just. And we get started with that. Second. All those. Very sorry.
Hi.
Hi. All close at time. Motion first.
And that's all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Mr. Khan, how are you doing?
I'm fine.
You're fine? You, uh. Pardon I, you don't want to come up to us?
Yeah. Yeah.
This is one that I can. Right. Out of the. Things. We're. Several.
Yes, it's. All right. It's. Um. Last year. Uh. When we. Met at that. One. It wasn't at the conference. But it. They wanted up in Jackson County. They went to. About that. LSRP. Was the. Uh. Was this the. The agreement. Roads. And up on roads. And road safety plan. Right. That's what they're doing. Um, so we've. Got in on that last year. So they're still in the process of. Of outing. Waiting. And going over our roads and stuff. And this was just another signature. Of. Um. That we have accepted. And they're. Going forward. This one's from the state side of it. And you know, lady. And. Um. It shows. Shows the. Um, state portion.
State pays nine percent. Kind of shows them. Just. The operator. So he's. They're. Kind of quick.
Yeah. And I think we already paid. For these some of them. Or the. Lost. Last.
Rules with their. Accepting.
Um. Road safety plan. When they go around. And, um, I gave down. The miles of our road miles. That we had. Blackout versus gravel. Um. What they do is value. Way that they go. They pay off. They pull. Crash. Reders. And other information. And compile.
So it's not the condition of the roads. It's the where are your danger areas.
Yeah. Yeah. What they're. What they're doing is like, it's an evaluation. Of. Your local roads.
Right. They got to pay it out. Where you get the money to fix it.
Yeah. Yeah. And then what they do is say, hey, if you. Send us this money. This county can do this. Um, to this road. Whether it be. Or. Um. Some of it's. Striving. Uh, it can go all the way down to signage. Something simple. Um. But that plan allows you to. Free up that funding. From.
And we've already paid a big share of that.
Yes. Yeah. We're. We, uh, I think it was like thirty five. Or. I think that's what we. Took back. Of it. To. Sell.
No. Russian.
No.
Is that anything? They need to look at. They might have been there to be.
It was very expensive. Cars. So we looked at a truck last week. And. Yeah, the, the numbers are quite a bit different from what I. Last time I dealt with. Finally.
I don't think we can. Get it. So.
No. It's. Put her back in the back.
I'm going to miss. With.
So with the one that took it over. Let's. How's that?
Um, we held up all because it's going to have to be towed around to the. Different.
Holy smokes.
Yeah. Yeah. Because you. Driving with one. The spreader. Wow. That's one.
That's one. And we. Have.
What's that?
Boy, we had bad luck with our.
Yeah. And. And I think the last time I seen repricing on one is around the two sixty five range. So this is what we went at. Yeah. Right.
They can't stay there. We're going to have to find out. I'm sure. I'm going to.
And I guarantee that even. It's supposed to stay there because they do a. By. Allowed for that number two. Right. But. Yeah. I asked. I was like, so how many? Maybe pulled up and said, hey. Good news. You. Went down. Yeah. You signed up. Yeah.
So people who don't know what we're working on.
But. It's. Well, what I wondered about. I mean, if. I said that on. And if. If you need two. On like. Forty years. And spread of that. What are you doing on the middle?
Yeah. Still don't change if they've gone. That one. Branded. So they were before a hundred fifty.
Um, yeah. I think after the discounts, I think that's. It was around forty sixty five. And then with our. The. Discount takes me down to that three seventeen.
Four oh eight was the price. And I don't know. That's kind of come down to three seventeen. But before they were a hundred and forty nine.
Um. Two. Two hundred. Two hundred thousand. Now, I guess a heavier throw than. Than. The low price ones. Um, now I don't really know. They. And work. Basically.
So what's up? But the. Those.
You press. Yes. A lot. Right now. Yeah. There's. There's not a lot right now that are set out. Um. Where you don't have to.
There are many different companies are those that can build the trucks.
I have another company that's supposed to come in next week. So this was just kind of. Right. Just wanted to show you this. The numbers. Over. That. Right. And.
Talk to them. You don't want.
We. Yeah. Want to. Well. And. And I got a message the other day. They had a, uh. They used. Like seven thousand mile. With the drop axle. Truck. Now that would have to be totally replanted. Right. So you're adding another thirty thousand. Yeah. Not getting full warranty. Right. Because it's considered a used.
The warranty is. I don't work. They're. In. On the side.
Three years. Uh.
Forty. So here's my question. Wanted something outside. How much would the warranty go for? Or would they pay for? They wouldn't. Exactly.
No.
So I mean, the warranty is kind of a.
Yeah. It just kind of gets you. If you have any kind of that. You. Well, right. At first.
Most of the stuff we have is going to go to our entrance. Not maybe because it's. Because of a crash.
Yep. So we had some warning on our Peter Rose over. Frank. And that was some of it. There's units. That came back. And that saved us later. Plus the parts. Around. Two thousand per truck. Yeah. Um. Where those doser units did go bad on there. And. Now they did a recall. But see, even if you do on a recall, that. That falls under another thing. There was one site. Did a few of them under one. And they figured out they had. Right. Yeah. Then it kicked back into that. Recall area. Yeah. So. Yeah, the price.
That's a scary number to look at. Around seventeen grand.
And.
For one job.
Well, I think they've kind of standardized. They've. So. You know, back. Two thousand. Twenty six or seven. When I was experimenting.
Mm hmm.
Now they've pretty much figured out this is what we're doing. They're seeing a little better.
Yeah. So, yeah. It was quite a bit. Quite a shock. Yeah. Usually. I'd say I have green equipment coming in. Um, green truck. They kind of do beds and stuff or cat cover. Nice painter beds. Okay. And they do like the cat service.
What about. The, uh, figure back off the state? Motor trucks not heavy enough?
Uh. I don't know. I've reached out to somebody.
It didn't work very good the last time.
At discount prices, I believe. I would be looking at. Every option. That we have.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
And we need three trucks.
I mean, these three jobs. But. That would give us. For the. The inwards for. Lot. Two thousand seventeen. Those were the ones that were sending the ladders burning. And. About once a year were replaced with the sprains on those. Just.
Those county always bought brand new trucks.
No. Yeah. No, we got the, the ones that we just. Paid off, I believe, were used trucks. Just other dudes. Yeah. Uh. Oh, no. Those were new. Um, the Shawland County one that's up there, the red one. Right there. Yeah. Uh, that's one that's been broke down since the beginning. Where. And, uh, and then the white freight line that was wrecked this summer. And uh, and then the white freight liner that was wrecked this summer. Um, that one was a used truck.
I thought there's one of those. About fair one.
Now, there's a whole man one.
So none of these are the seven days of the year.
There, the one that rolled over was the two thousand eleven.
And luckily, nobody's got hurt in any of it.
Yeah. So far, we're doing all of that.
You don't get hurt in a snow pile. Really, they don't?
Somebody just saying.
Jeremy, your man named this. Left it out of the same.
My side down.
Seven calories one? Yeah, yeah, he came right back that last time. Like he called him back up. He's like, let's not go there. Let's come back in. But yeah, that was, that was a great thing.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, everything in this is pretty standard. Then you've looked at the audit requirements. I think the county may have to. Oh, compile some information. There's an indemnification provision that's pretty standard. I can't imagine that. Really.
Yeah, I kind of think about preliminary with the mapping system.
Yeah.
Just get that whole piece come up with anything that you need.
Okay.
Finish that out, so.
And the county's only responsible for ten percent and the city's paying for ninety, so.
Yeah.
So I make a motion. We're hearing the local words. So if we point out the point of down in the second sentence. Second. All those and those.
Hi.
All this good timing. That moves along the street.
Yes. It does. That is basically all I have. Uh, we did get the one from our back from. Place. The law communicated with the community. So it's back in America who was back three years.
Someone or don't like.
Yes. So the last one we did the most one to.
Well, no. Okay.
We'll buy the pickup. Um, we're gonna get it in. I was holding for the end of the year stuff, so I'll get a hold of it. He was. He was the lowest. He was, I think he might have been within a hundred dollars or so of plant lawyer, but he's low, so. Yeah. I keep it low.
And while you're here, we might just do this. You know, this uh, last time, but Commissioner Bailey wasn't here, so this is the verified petition for eminent domain. In case you have any questions, uh, Commissioner Cooper and Driver, look at this. Um, I fixed your name, so here's a new, new uh, version of this. Uh, that, that Rogue R didn't make it in this one, so we can just. And there's uh, two signatures here as we signed the petition as well as a verification on that.
So you need each other. Do we need to make a motion approval this one sign?
I think it was made last and they already signed a copy of it, but uh, it wasn't fully executed in this one. Corrected.
Then he may get out of there.
I know, I'll take it. I'll go by it uh, in court here this week.
Oh, okay. Okay, alright. Do then, when you file up the, then they've got to make a hearing, don't they, to?
Yeah, first we'll have to serve the landowners and then they'll have a chance to respond. Uh, excellent, thank you. And uh, we can move for the court to have a hearing on eminent domain portion. Uh, it'll probably take at least. The other parties, landowners, will have twenty days to respond to the petition. Once we get them served. And so we'll have to either have the sheriff serve it, or we can have a private process of serve and just go out and give them notice of the lawsuit.
Okay, alright. Then he has another one. I might be starting on those. Uh, yeah, two days. Uh, they're starting. Uh, on. On one like that. Yeah, they wanted to start that one off in that. By the time first total. We haven't got that part yet.
So you could start it once she's filed them domains.
Um, it has to be.
Has to go through the court first.
Right, yeah, and to go through the court first, for the judge to say it applies.
Okay.
For in the domain, we can't do, we can't do lines or.
Okay.
So I told Wildcat, I'm like, I gotta wait.
So I remember we don't think push forward.
Yeah, yeah. That means because that water line is driving away.
And then we'll try and bifurcate it to have the court, I mean, really eminent domain, the eminent domain procedure act is to determine the, the cost that the county has to pay for the land. And so our intent is to bifurcate and have the court say, yeah, eminent domain can be used and let them go forward. And then the appraisal process and cost estimation will.
Okay.
Take out whatever.
Okay. Once I get a call from Brian, says the court says it applies.
Right.
I can get a hold of the modern district and have them. Get that water line out of the way.
Okay.
Um. Sometimes I speak, uh, creepy should start dirt worker next week on. First bridge up there, Bombcat. Bombcat, so I'm attracted to construction. Rock and dirt work on both projects.
Okay.
Well, so we do have a local, local person. They're not auto get it in the paper. They're gonna start working on it. On my screw where. So I told him, I was like, well, that was like, well, it was three weeks ago. Um, AT&amp;T just gave us that permanent information. For the phone line to be new, that's that rated.
Yeah.
So and they had that stuff since September.
Yeah, oh, we know. Yeah. Okay.
So the whole process of being kind of this.
Yeah.
Just mess.
Yeah, I understand.
It's, it's fun when you're dealing with phone companies from there. Uh, at least AT&amp;T keeps the same name. Really terrible.
Yeah.
Right, it's been weathered and.
Okay.
Well, happy new year.
Yeah, happy new year. Thank you. So all, um. Yeah, branding, it probably won't be next week. It'll probably take a couple of weeks and I'll see what green and get some numbers. I won't compare the two. Uh, and so I'm seeing where. I'm trying to get it. Um, those, those were pretty heavy trucks too. That's, yeah, that is. Compared to what they bought the last time, that is a severe duty truck compared to. We can worse or any of the other ones. Um, so that reflects a little bit of the price.
Yeah.
But yeah, somehow that's not. Working at its max. Or rating and the horsepower for all day long.
Hmm.
Uh, something that's working in that lower range of that. Um, can get more years out of it. More years without.
Right.
So we'll see where we can get or something else in there. The people that. See where it falls.
Yeah, alright, thanks.
Does your step sign on all of it?
Notice he's probably wouldn't have needed that one, which was if the lady doesn't show he wasn't.
Okay. Of how long do you leave? So I make a motion on executive session following that, under the following exception to the Kansas Open Media Act, the sense of non like personnel matter. Exception to discuss personal matters related to non like personnel, prepared devices and processes other than individuals involved who are paid a honor, health actors, something to do that, HR. And our two county counselors. Present. Also coming back to this room at ten oh five. Second, all those and those.
Hi.
Oh, love for today. Sorry.
He said in time. You know, you're a fraud or a.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll just call the.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
On the same.
Oh, are they allowed to say the total? Yeah. I think.
Do you want to come out and make a motion? For the benefit of our viewing audience not here.
Yeah. So I might be able to extend the right of protection with other moments with respect to the brother.
Second.
All right. Nervous. Uh, all at the same time. Rushing through this. Someone. The camera. But I know it is not.
I want to.
Okay.
And now in the meeting. People can play whatever kind of games they want. I think it's about a lot of people. You know, before. What did you? For I don't know. But I think they're able to cover. I'm sure well, there are some things that. Uh, I think we can actually work on this part. And. Well. Right. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. I hope. To this time. Okay. I'm ready. Uh. Uh. So. Now we. Okay. 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 Um. This is all here to help you with that part. I have. Yeah. Sorry. Right. Right. What? Yeah. Yeah. Uh. It's. It may take a while. See. Yeah. For me, it's fine. Yeah. Yeah. Oh. Well, I don't know if it's that far. I just. It's. Okay. Yeah. I do the other one. I think so. Yes. So. Yeah. We. So. Okay. I believe in God. And there are. Um. Um. So you're you're changing your when you're going back in.
We're gonna go ahead where. The first. Right.
You give me your name, I think you know. The name and email.
Okay.
And I'll get it.
So I've made an oath and gone executive session under following exception to cancel. Exactly. So it's a model personal matter. Exception to discuss personal matters, not elected person to protect the rights of persons who was involved with the take down announcers. And for a period of ten months. He probably needs the attorney time for the second. I will do attorney.
Yeah. Attorney client, you're doing ten fifty two to eleven and two permissions and the two.
Second.
Right.
No, he was.
No.
And then. Actually. One. Two. The. And. More. And. Okay. Yeah. One minute. Fine.
So you guys. So no binding action taken, the sheriff never showed up there?
No, I needed the lady, so I thought we that he might have had some conversation with her about it.
Do you?
I do. And here is the, and I made some follow up with this.
Are you back to see us again?
Sorry.
This is from Sunny for the getting a server so that the C I P software can go out to all of the. Departments that need. Yeah. Um, so option one is with buying user or option two is. Using an in-house full email server. So. And then the, at the bottom is just kind of estimate his time with the other tax time per.
And this is to do what again?
So the outline offices can have access to C I P. So like. Have access to C I P and the health department can have access to C I P.
So right now they have no access to.
Right, correct.
General clarification.
Right.
All of, okay.
Health department, anybody that helps.
Right, okay.
So if you want to look at it, if you have questions, we can always have Sunny come in and explain it.
I think that might be helpful, maybe.
I'll see if he.
Sunny's not showing up in the main floor. You have no further information, right?
Yes, it comes down, how often would they need to have access to, what would they use? A daily thing or weekly or monthly or?
Well, there's a lot of features on C I P and as we, as more people learn about it and are trained on it, but first it's about the budget side of it. But then the other side is the receiving side. So all those departments that do anything with receiving, when that money comes in, it gets entered in the program. When they come to do their deposit, they would just be running, you know, that and then that would confirm their deposit. So there's. There's multiple things in C I P we're not using right now that would be really good for tracking of the expenditure, receiving, budgeting, all of that.
So when you say receiving, you're on the needs level, how do they do it on cell phone, bring a deposit in on here?
So like when the health department brings their deposit, it's usually brings some form of paper with it. It shows like when we did the deposit for the transportation, we say how, you know, like here's the amount of checks, here's the amount of cash, here's the total amount of deposit, we list the checks on it. Kind of like you would a deposit for the bank.
So with the, you would have to ask attorney for them because it's not gonna magically do that on itself if they haven't done it before, right? And they don't, that's gonna be sent there without.
Correct.
I mean, it's not like you manually deposit money through this account.
Who's entering and I. You can enter in, like if I go to the health department, I get a shot and I give them ten dollars, then they can enter it in right there, give me a receipt. And then that also gives the paper they're gonna bring over to the treasurer's office when they deposit that month.
I think on the receiving side, it would, Christine. She would be the one that would be able to explain that and answer questions on it. I know when we did that C I P training, I did it, I did online and I watched some of the. Webinars and I caught some of it, but I don't use the program, but it. It sounded like it'd be really good for us. I know for Christine, she said she'd really like to see that added. Where the receiving side gets implemented in the departments, but she would be the one that would need to explain that.
So road and bridge, correct?
They're, they're fun, but they're still.
But so they still got to. So this would pick all that up immediately. I mean, it still won't put the information there correctly unless somebody does it right then.
Right.
Or somebody doesn't want.
They'll be keyed in there sort of like. I am the angel. Not. I don't like that I'm being called. First of all.
Yeah. We're asking questions about. The remote servers. Is when. If the health department brings in money and posts immediately. But it won't post to me unless they do whatever they need to do to make it do that correct.
I was trying to explain a little bit about the receiving side of what's available on C I P, but I don't use those. Technical explanation.
So tell me what we would use the remote access for and. Word of the speech. Health department.
Health department about road bridge. You'd have to share with the office because they collect funds that they key into a spreadsheet and that have to bring to us. And instead they could key it right into C I P too, which is what Heather was probably explaining.
And each department could do that depending on what their services are and what their fees are.
Right.
And that's the receiving side. Then you have the expenditure.
And they give you their. Budgeting and stuff, yeah. So basically. They would say customers are part of them and they paid twenty-five dollars to the health department and the health department would enter it in C I C, would produce a receipt for the customer. And then at the end of their business day, they would have a batch of transactions already in the system. Then they would say, okay, uh, we need two hundred fifty dollars today, here's my patch that matches that and that's gonna be brought into the treasurer. So then we would say, yes, you brought us two fifty, that matches what you entered, we would approve that. Batch and then it would post in C I C to their funds.
So it still takes the people in these, in each of these departments to make sure they. Use the system to make sure that, so they need training on how to do all this.
But it would take away from them being on John type of computer system doing receipts. Landfill, road and bridge, they all do receipts for customers and they're all on different systems now. And it would get everybody on the same thing. So customers and accounting, no matter where they went, they could have the same type of receipt from the county.
So all the computers that they have in their existing places, they're all capable of using all of this.
No. He would have to get them.
He wouldn't need any additional.
If, if the V P N from their current system through that server that would hit them in C I C.
And that's what I expect, Tina.
Well, they said two, I think, in each department. Two logons, because it's a different log on. So like your department head would have one and then maybe your, I'll just say clerk.
So I might, I might be getting this.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out how this will work like. Because I think it's always a good idea if you have people making a copy right then. Because then we don't have. Checks and obviously.
Card and pop receipts or you have, I don't know what the other ones are, but they're on different systems right now.
So what's the training that's gonna be involved for all these other departments that haven't had it? I mean, if we put this in, you can't just start using it.
We have to set it up so that they can use it, first of all, it's kind of a. Access thing and then training them is pretty straightforward if they're only doing it for their department. If, I mean, I would say we would put a plan together that would phase it.
Essentially, we get all the financial transactions on the receiving side into one system.
So C I C on our system or is it cloud based?
It's on a hard. Yes.
Software.
They are working on going to a cloud-based pollution, but right now we are a hard mainframe system. Which is why we need that server.
So it doesn't sound we would need this.
But can you put a component on them and then they bring you a zip drive, plug it in with the bag of money and say, here's all. Well, I know they wouldn't have to pay ten thousand dollars, but you know. Can we have that software on our systems? So they can do everything that it's supposed to do.
Hardwired to our mainframe and then hand, it has, we will talk to each other.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I want to know, you can't put, they can't use that software and put it on. And then zip drive and run it down here and hand it to you.
The department, like the transportation would probably have to continue to use some of what they're using because it works with the scale.
Right.
Right, the sheriff will have to do something, we're on the sheriff's side, all I want is when we give them a personal property warnings, they are literally handwriting in carbon copy. Receipt books where they can just key it right in there and hopefully it would avoid any discrepancies between. The customer saying, I already picked up the sheriff's office, we'd be able to see it right away.
Okay.
So that was another big thing to talk to.
All right, so where are we at? Here in beautiful London, Kansas, or where we're occupied. I know we have several problems with. Media com, sometimes with our internet, what, does that mean all those departments, if the internet's not working here, the computer system can they, they can't get into them?
They would not be able to get in it, but guess what? Even when we've gone down, we have been able to get into it.
But my point is, is if that happens, can they still function somehow?
The only thing is they wouldn't have access to the C I P to them.
I see. You have to go back.
You could have to go back to the. Put it in there when it does come back, which is what we had to do. I mean, we've got, technology's great, but we always have to have.
So when do they expect us to go to iPhone?
Two years, two years.
Two years, so in two years.
Um, not, that was the. That the accounting suite? Or was that the suite?
Oh, no, no, it's, it's a way down.
Yeah, so it's only one of their modules.
We just learned, at least I did, there's a lot of features we're not using in our program right now. Absolutely, that's available.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So whoever we need, whether it's Sunny or C I C or somebody, kind of explain a lot more of this, they're about.
In terms of the technology needed to do it or how we would use the technology.
On how we would use it and so forth, so and to justify this for ten thousand dollars.
Um, I think probably a collaborative effort with Sunny and C I P because they, they can help explain the number of hours of labor. Time savings that it would create, which would help offset that cost.
And that part I like, except that I hear, then all hear the other side going. They're doing this creates more hours because now they gotta do it twice, which I don't think that's the case and that's why I'm saying that knowledge will take care of this, but. Until everybody understands it, that's what I want to make it, even I don't understand at this point. And I can get an idea what it's about.
Yeah.
But like I, I'm a little different because I hate putting stuff on a computer. I still do everything manual, I still live by hand. I'm a little different, I just go out of the car business, I know it all about that, but still, two million dollars here, I can track that on paper. I don't like computer systems, I don't trust them for one, and that's probably because I don't understand them. So maybe the more understanding I get, then I will understand more of this and that's why I keep asking, because this is still gonna be, as many times as I see it in my office, every time I lose the internet throughout the course of the day. That means all these people are gonna lose contact with the courthouse several times. One miller's too hard, line gets wet, we lose video.
Us as well.
Exactly. I mean, you know what I'm talking about. So when an office loses contact, at what point do they finally get the server? They get angry because you can't connect. So why don't, why am I doing this? Let's just go the old way and be done. And then I'll just go in once a week or once every two weeks or whatever.
Um, because we should be putting policies in place on how.
So this is all gonna go in connection with the financial policy, we're still gonna put together and that's, and I hope I'm looking at this, I just think that we wanna wait until we get everything else in place so we can make sure it's all compatible, we just. That makes sense.
So what's gonna happen? Well, the other side of this is all the budget stuff we're doing too, when we talked, remember last year, when we talked about budget prep and we were gonna use it for last budget cycle? And then it got put off to this year, this is also for the budget prep that we're gonna be doing this year, that budget tool.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't know where we are with the policies and procedures, but I would hope that we write them with this in mind and then we go and make.
You have no stuff? Afternoon.
Yeah, are you ready to spend about my time?
Not quite.
What's that?
I, I mean, I guess I can ask that. I have two contacts in regards to the senior center and transportation. Um, that I've reached out to her, one was the checks, blue, purple wave, whatever those were, um, they're asking for a contact and then, um. East Central Kansas Coordinated Transit Council was not aware of the tenants over there and they would like a contact as well.
And, and the reason here is that, um. They were, I got a phone call from the senior center, um, evidently the vans are going somewhere and. Somewhere else to get their oil changed instead of benign. And benign was coming, pick the vehicles up and bring them back. We discovered a company, we have sent a driver, you know, personal car, big up the van. And they were asking if they could just start using benign for the, the oil change. And I said, I'm not in, I'm not in contact with that, I'm bringing that commission.
So you're, who wants to know who's contacted? Well, those companies?
Yes, because they submit payments, but there's another separate conversation about that.
What was the second, he said, what?
East Central Kansas Coordinated Transit Council. So they submit their reimbursements to, uh, I'm assuming it helps offset the cost of our. That, yeah, that would be the transportation, will however, is that correct? Cause East Central Kansas Area Agency on aging is completely different.
That's what I was trying to figure out, isn't it? It's not related with that.
But the checks they pay go to Osage County Council on Aging. Not to Osage County Senior Center.
Oh, but that would be. That would be that.
There's the area, I think it's that one.
Who is the, who is the council on aging?
County Council or?
I mean, we certainly got checks made to Osage County Council on Aging.
Right.
This is, this is a bank account that does not get managed from our.
And they're getting money from the East Area Transit?
Yes.
I know nothing about that.
But that's not showing up on the. The, the senior center council. That money ain't showing up unless it's not very much. I know, that's why.
I was presented this by the bank because there's an issue with these two checks. But this is not a bank account of the county that we're using.
Okay. I don't know what's going on. Because it's not coming in with their senior center council.
Those two checks you're looking at have um. Were presented in deposit in October. They are the exact same checks presented again in December. And our bank, citizens bank caught them and I contacted them and they have not reissued any payments.
Who were the checks from?
Coordinated Transit uh, Council. I'm looking to see who the signatures are. Have you contacted?
I've asked her to confirm that those checks originally cleared their bank account in October. I don't know.
If this is the reimbursements. Through the K dot grant fifty three eleven. It should not be made out to Osage Council on Aging and they should not be going in any non-county bank.
I don't know if that's what they're succeeding with. It's the difference by transportation.
So do we have any idea what this money's at right now?
Well, those two checks got rejected by our bank. I've asked.
Rejected by our bank?
Yes, by citizens. Because they are the exact same checks that we presented to them in October that have already cleared our way.
How did we get two checks? I mean, cause that, you're talking about.
Purple wave is different. They did come back and say that they need to reissue that check, so that. There's a cool check. Exactly the same. Already been presented to the bank, already cleared to bank, presented again in December, heard a problem. I don't know where that money's from.
You don't have a record in your office that this money ever.
Not for the council on aging.
But you have a record of that was deposited, that's coming in.
Yes, in October.
So it might as in her somewhere, we just don't know where.
And they have not reissued anything and they wouldn't have reissued the same exact check number, same exact check date.
Right.
Who is Yvonne Verne?
She is the contact at Eastern that I spoke to.
Would you, when you called her, would you ask her if this is in regards to the K dot grant?
Okay, K dot fifty three eleven. Yes, so my.
Can you do one other thing? Can you ask them for a printout? For the last two years of monthly reimbursements that we should have been getting.
I've asked her to confirm that these have cleared their bank. Not these two, but the ones in October.
Here's what I started to wonder.
Those reimbursement checks are for the grant fifty three eleven. And they should be coming to us and being deposited. I think they go in the general. I don't, I don't know if in the past they've made made out to Osage County Senior Aging.
Years ago, they, they used, before we had general public transportation. They use Osage County Council on Aging and that's what we call them even in bookwork.
Right, yes.
So you're saying these checks are copies or they redid the check?
The issuer did not redo the check.
So how were there two?
Those are two checks.
They were not reissued, nope. She did not, no, she had no record of her being reissuing those two checks. The only reissue check was one that she uh, was told was lost at the bank in January that they reissued in March and I've asked her to confirm. Would their bank get both of those checks that cleared or just the reissued?
Well, this is definitely reimbursed. So I think it's coming from the ground because it says right about September twenty.
We've already received those two same exact checks before in October. And they cashed and they cashed. Our bank didn't return them, so I'm asking her to verify her bank records. That they saw them clear in October. But our bank, yes, but our bank stopped this, that exact copy of a check.
I guess I'm trying to figure out why would our bank stop a payment that's not.
Cause it's exactly duplicate of what they've already processed.
I think that was creep on. I mean, I paid the same car payment.
It is the, the same check number, the same check date, a dollar amount, so that's.
That will be the, that's why I keep, yeah.
She's asked me to look at the color of the check. I have to call the bank and ask because their checks are.
What account was it trying to be deposited into?
Um, it wasn't a county bank account? I have to say the one on aging because.
Ours would be a county bank.
Ours would be a county bank.
There wouldn't be any reason for the K dot reimbursement check to go into a NAR county bank account.
Saw the check twice. It was a positive in our bank.
This has none. They didn't process these.
Because they matched up to another check that was already. Can you get the back of these checks?
I can ask him. If this is a non-county bank account, then why did they give you this information? They know Tammy's owner of the county, so they don't have to contact. Same as these people are asking, who would we contact now?
Right, I think this is a lot like. The purple way check where it didn't get deposited. Gets a little crazier because it's like where would it have gotten? These checks have been cashed somewhere else.
It physically two checks exactly the same were cashed in October.
And were they deposited in our county accounts?
Yeah, now we have. Physically, there is now two other checks. But the bank has said, whoa. The date, the check number and the amount are exactly the same. Why are you trying to resubmit?
But they're trying to be submitted to a bank account that's not a county account.
I need to confirm with citizens that that I understand. And I contacted the issuer and they have not been notified that there was an issue. They were not notified to resubmit, to reissue them and she has not reached them. Reissue the same check number. Nobody does that.
Right, so you said these checks aren't going into the county. They're going into somebody else's checking. You might be wanting to contact the sheriffs also to find out what's going on with them because that sounds like somebody's trying to. Put a check in an account that's not.
Well, they're also duplicating checks.
Yeah, right, that's.
On that company's account.
What would you do, Brian?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd like to see the, the back of the check, see if they're endorsed, see if they endorse them and then. So they're paid to the order of Osage County Council on Aging. But that's not the account that they tried to put it into?
Well, we don't have. We just have an Osage County account. My understanding is the. Council on Aging is a board that has a separate bank account. Yes.
Okay. But this check was not put into the general fund. Yeah, but the attempt, I guess, was not to put these checks into the general fund. It's some, some other.
Some, some, they just didn't throw them back to us. They didn't know.
Yeah, I mean. If uh. Yeah, I would like to know which. I'd like to see the, the backs of the check and see. Do they were trying to, what account they were trying to put it into and then yeah, possibly contact law enforcement because of. If they're to the exact same checks and they're going into non-county accounts, it's a problem.
The uh, Yvonne is very baffled right now, so.
If you can call Yvonne back. Those checks from here on out need to be made out to Osage County.
Yeah, you have, it's got to match up to the.
It, it can't be made out to the council because the council is a separate board. They're not part of the county.
Is there a word, sort of word about?
That's why, I think there was a step of reason for doing that. Because otherwise it came to the county and that makes him, but that shouldn't be the right name on the check. It should, it should be a general public transportation or something reimbursed. I would know a check like that came out.
As for the last two years of the monthly reimbursements that have been sent to us. And I guess we'll need the check to make sure that we'll verify.
So we need to change your address when the check happens.
Right. So are they coming to me, the clerk? Who do you want?
Uh, where does it need to route?
It really needs to go to public transportation.
Well, they probably have some. I mean, I would assume that the brother would bring for somebody.
Right.
They would need to get that check and know that they got it and then bring it into the treasury.
Right.
But it should be made out to general public transportation. If years ago, you know, like I said, names have changed over the years and I wonder if that's just something that's never gotten changed. When you get to two years, you'll definitely see that, right?
Right.
Or if it was changed like.
By you. Then you can contact General Transportation Council.
Yes, but if they get it received, we're just needed in.
Yeah.
Probably they bring it to us.
It just stops. Yeah, it's all like, because the money needs to flow back in.
So can it be? Here, where it says Osage County Council on Aging, could it say Osage County Public Transportation? And then down here. It could be. Instead of Tammy's name, it could be the Osage County Treasurer. So that way, so it'll get up to the treasurer, but it'll be made out to the.
Right, and then I'll have the guy to reimburse it to.
That maybe would.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And then I'll ask for the backs. She also wants me to find out what color the checks are and I said I've looked at thousands of checks.
It just made my day.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
It's, yeah, I quit drinking once, I might have started. Wow. Are you done with all the great news?
Are you part of me? Oh, I was just thinking back on this. If we need to have Sunny coming here. Uh, I will reach out to him, but also I think um. Daddy. Because she's, yeah, she can speak to it too from, yeah. I mean, that's the receiving side. The first part is getting all the budget prep stuff that we're using this year, right? So. That's why I think Sunny can walk through the two different options with us.
Yeah, I don't know what, what he provided for that, but. The only reason we need that is because we're on a. Hard server here in the courthouse. It's not, nothing is cloud based yet. And remoting it does not work.
Down next Monday?
Yeah. Yeah, because.
But.
This will have to get implemented. Really need to be implemented pretty soon because then, but.
Yeah.
That's my, you went, yeah, you have more stuff wrong with?
Yes, um, Captain on Barclay Township. Where's the resignation of a board member and um, recommendation of a new board member?
So from Barclay Township, this letter is regarding acceptance, Dennis Brock resignation from Barclay Township War. And adding a valor pit to replace his position as treasurer. And sign Russell Baldwin, Dennis Brock and Rodney Gerquist. So we just make a motion to accept him. So I make a motion to accept the resignation, Dennis Brock, approved upon the ballot.
Second.
I, I'll post that on.
Days.
I got three different ones.
Well, we've got two meetings on one day and one day. Sunny is available next week, but he can do the secret team. Would that be a pop one off? Okay. Sunny can't do next Monday, but he can do the secret team.
Uh, on the first page, mostly made on first floor, third seven point in Amazon and uh. I'm not sure what that amount should be. It shows two million seven hundred. But twenty seven eighty one ninety nine.
Um, I'll have to check it and correct it. That's on the.
Running George McCurdy.
Okay.
From the E M G P G, I think it was twenty seven eighty one ninety nine. I think it was just a zero added in there.
Yeah, I'm just. Okay. Okay.
On that December thirty. Everyone's being others near all the three hundred thousand. The car is in the right place.
And if you have any other things to say, or if you're reviewing bills, I can go up and breakfast really quickly.
You have business cards in your email file? And then I can go in there and give you access and I can show you where on the website you guys can get into the. Or just give me a little piece of paper. And it's on the if you go to the the Osage County website, you go to the very, very bottom of the page, it says employee access or. And that's you click that and it'll have you register. And I'll put this. I'll go in there. And I can give you an access. Yeah, and and the only thing that's on that. Stuff in there, but it's 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 where the employees have access to all of their.
Wait.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We have two corrections and I'm gonna choose and make those well unless it was something I keep counting.
Just like I told you about.
They all have the card.
So I would make a note. Actually, yeah, on December thirty, that should say three hundred thousand.
So I will correct those.
Right, so I make a motion to approve minutes of December twenty seven, two thousand twenty two. And December twenty seven, two thousand twenty two special meeting. And the meetings of December thirty, two thousand twenty two. Second, all those in person. So you got a question? Can we should people contact for the senior center?
If they have a question, especially the the employees that are working there or there's something regarding uh vehicle issue or.
So employee questions, I would probably say you.
Yeah.
The other ones that I mean.
They have to be voted on by the commission, but um who can you want to contact?
Have you done that a fast on? What do you guys I mean? How do we uh? Contact as far as it goes if it's one hundred.
Change it on the the button and man.
Those just come over to the commission.
Okay, but who have those records in fact, you can.
Uh they can just call and they had a question.
Right, yeah, I mean, as you know, we. They've already asked a question, so the answer is let them go ahead and have it done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the setup was.
Yeah.
If the bus is need change right now, we don't have to. We're gonna have to just get that one going.
It's for nice one to come and take some off.
Yeah.
Right.
Alright, so.
I mean, there will be a new director in place at some point in time and that is and nobody else. So I don't know what the setup was, but. What they're saying right now is that it has to be done and has to be done when they get done. Right. Right.
So you're gonna call you?
Uh that's fine. Until further notice. Next week then well, next week there will be a new.
Yeah.
Maybe. I guarantee there will be a new guy. Okay, well, I'm better. And I've asked you this a hundred times, when I see that name back on here again. Right at the beginning. We're talking about that several times and not hanging that also, what can I say, exactly?
Yes, but he's calling and he keeps adding money on there and we're gonna take it. It shouldn't come out there. It was supposed to come out of the the. The treasury, yes. So we need.
Which one is that? That one that I had on top of there.
Well, when you do that. It actually went through, you know, because you guys were building that other check, so it needs to come off twice because it's somewhere like back in August or.
Well, where you stop payment on that check with issue.
Yeah, and it just needs to come out of the commission's spend because otherwise.
Well, it will.
So you're gonna change that to that one, right?
Yes, we will change what you might have. And the first check that was issued, I was telling Heather that there's been a stop payment that on it.
Doesn't need to be a stop payment or just.
No, because the check there's no check. He says he never got the check and we don't have the check. We have to stop paying on the check because.
Oh, I thought we never mean.
No, there was a check. But well.
I stapled it to something in my hand, but actually it's over one second.
I thought you said.
We put it in the safe, but it's I mean, it's not there. I don't know. If it was stapled to something, maybe that something got. Moved, but I went through that door twice taking everything out. So we stopped paying.
I got far away and I gotta look a little bit as I would. Um. Next week. We have a new slur and uh. Last home.
And the judge will be here eight thirty to do that.
And then we're gonna be there thirty next week. Uh I would like to thank Fred. Uh for the eight years of his go to Six County and I don't want to even think about how many other things he's done. Oh, the years in of Six County and. Jackie uh. She's a tough old gosh.
Yeah.
So. She probably will be uh less comfortable to if you're spending time in the city, better find some part time jobs. So the X to do on. But on the end of the citizens of Six County, thank you for your aid. I will come here next week and. Let's let's get.
We're excited to see you.
You're a really young guy and you know you okay. Well, Jackie, we said hi.
No, I think it.
We wanted to know big though, we did get you a box of cookies or videos. Was your presence.
No. Yeah. Yeah. Uh okay, well, it's been.
We'll get a piece of raw and she's gonna do some password.
Yeah, right.
For sure.
So.
I will say. Eight years, right?
Yeah. So.
Also, next week. I can assure you. Without a shadow of doubt. There will be a new Osage County Chair. I will not be serving as chairman again. So next week we will have a new chairman installed. Um I appreciate the few years I've had the honor of doing this, but. That's enough. I will stay as a commissioner, but. Chairmanship, I think it's time that somebody else does it. So thank you for.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody else have anything on? Do you wanna make anything long speaking?
No, no, I'm also beginning my day. I'm not over this there completely, so. Still be active on a few things.
Good.
And so.
I'll still be around too.
Yeah.
And I wanted to formally introduce Kate Cook here.
Again.
Again. All day, but uh former 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 county councilor here. What what were your years of service?
Well, I was here for my first couple of years.
Like two thousand. Twelve eleven? Yeah, that sounds about right. Or that's not right, Martin?
No, I'm sure probably it's time this really fast.
That is very first couple of years, you ran thirteen, thirteen fourteen.
Yeah. You must have been until sixteen. Two thousand eleven, two thousand sixteen.
Yeah. Um. Well, Kay.
It's two thousand thirteen to sixteen.
Okay.
Well, he's with our our firm now, so he may since he's local, he may tag team in a little bit, but uh. Uh during legislative session, as we've discussed, sometimes Josh gets pulled away, so I'm I'm taking on more, but. Since he's local, if you need someone to run over here for accounting commission meeting, I'm wanting to at least make sure you all knew him. He's uh.
With a name like that is just. I I worked in the Congress for years with a guy named Cheatham, yeah. Perfect name for a bird eye. Kirk, perfect name for an attorney.
He's got a little better workspace though. Yeah, and that little folding paper.
Yeah, I think Ken was there show a verse and he gave a country chair. I mean, that's a kind of fitting, I guess.
Yeah, we're excited to have him and I think he'll come back and do some good work, so.
All right, well, welcome aboard, I think. Well, you guys are gonna figure out a way to split that cup, I think was that sent uh.
I just love to.
Cut it in the third.
Yeah.
All right, with that, I would make a motion to repay the bills in the amount of fifty thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and ninety two cents. And payroll in the amount of six hundred and two thousand, thirty dollars and four cents. Second, all those in person.
Hi.
Hi.
All those in person.
Oh, yeah, I need to. News accounts here on that. Yeah, and probably that one too.
Yeah, we'll keep signing.
Brad, do you have anything else?
No, not really.
Wrong.
No, were you gonna see Christine Bernie thing before you adjourned or were you just gonna?
Well.
Were you gonna say she heard him back?
Yeah, and Stephanie was gonna say something, so.
Did you need to go see if Stephanie?
Yeah. We gotta stop.
Well, good thing now is I quit giving out your business cards. A hundred years ago all around. I didn't know that.
She already asked you what she needed to ask you. So I guess you.
I just saw Christine.
Okay, so you know, okay.
Yeah, we're happy to talk to you.
I mean, unless she needs us or something, probably she does.
Oh, the senior center, we need to have the janitor service that does the ladies and stuff there. They need to start automatic again over there. That guy terminated for some reason. They're handing it out. So oh, you're talking about the. Way out once. Was she not using somebody over there? Well, she was gonna do it herself or whatever and then didn't happen. Yeah, they do the mocks and the and the throw rugs and stuff, you know, playing that up. And, yeah. Okay.
So we don't have anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh so move.
All those in person say hi.
Hi.
All those in person. Now what are you in there?
I don't know yet. I guess you're.